Well, please come to order. Good evening, everyone, and again, welcome to the organizational meeting of the Caroline County Planning Commission. All members except Mr. Richard Williams are present. And at this point, I will turn the meeting over to, I'm sorry, go ahead. Yes, Mr. Hughes.
Hang on one second, we need to record.
I've got to say all of that all over again. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the organizational meeting of the Caroline County Planning Commission, January twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four. All members of the Planning Commission are present excluding Mr. Richard Williams. And as stated, this is the organizational meeting. Mr. Hughes will be conducting the meeting from this point on. Our purpose tonight is the election of chairman, vice chair, adoption of the rules of order, establish states and times for regular planning commission meetings, and at that point, we will close the organizational meeting. Mr. Hughes, you have the floor and you have control, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so I'll call to order the organizational meeting and we'll take a nomination for the chair.
Does any commissioner have a nomination for chair?
I would like to nominate Bob Schwartz for the chair position.
I will second that, if I might.
So we have a nomination and a second time for discussion.
Mr. Hughes, I will abstain from voting. I don't think it's fair that I vote for myself.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes, sir.
You had something to discuss? You want to make comment?
No, I have nothing to state at this time, except I think Mrs. Schwartz did a great job last year. And I'd be very, very happy to have him again as our chairperson. Thank you.
So as stated, we have a nomination in the second. Call a question. Mr. Weaver? How do you vote?
Yes.
Dr. Horton?
Aye.
Mr. Minor?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
And Mr. Williams is absent. Ms. Schwartz, you're the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Commissioners, I must say one thing. It has been my pleasure and honor to have served as chair last year. It is my pleasure and honor to do so again. Each one of you, as well as staff, had made this task much easier, and I do thank you and I appreciate it. With that, I would like to nominate Mr. J.D. Young as vice chair for the Planning Commission of this year.
I would like to second that, sir, if I might.
Motion by the chair, seconded by Mr. Weaver. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of Mr. Young serving as vice chair signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by majority. Congratulations, Mr. Young. You are vice chair.
Thank you, boy.
We next have the adoption of the rules of order. Members, have you had an occasion to review the rules of order?
I have, sir.
Yes.
And I have seen no changes that should be made at this time.
All right, sir.
Is there a motion?
Is there a motion?
That was asked of Mr. Weaver. Was that his motion?
Yes, I would make a motion that we approved the two thousand and twenty four rules of order as submitted.
Motion by Mr. Weaver, seconded by the chair and Mr. Minor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The rules of order for two thousand and twenty four are adopted. And moving right along. We next have the establish the dates and times for regular planning commission meetings. Members in your packet, you have a calendar that has been established. Are there any comments regarding the calendar?
No. No.
Nope, okay. Is there a motion to adopt the regular meeting schedule of the Caroline County Planning Commission as presented?
I would make that motion, sir.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Weaver, seconded by Mr. Minor and Dr. Horton. All those, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. There being no further business, at this point, we will entertain a motion to close the organizational meeting.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Dr. Horton, seconded by Mr. Minor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And with that, the organizational meeting is closed. One item down. Got off something, but it didn't. We will now open the regularly scheduled meeting of the Caroline County Planning Commission, January twenty fourth, oh, correction, January twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four. The meeting is now open. I invite everyone to join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and for the record, I will again introduce the members of the commission and staff. To my far left is Mr. J.D. Young, the vice chair, serving in Reddy Church District. To my left is Dr. Carol Horton of the Port Royal District. I involve Schwartz of the Bowling Green District. To my right is Mr. Purcell Minor of the Manapanaia District. To his right is Mr. George Weaver, representing Madison. Mr. Richard Williams, the representative from Western Carolina, is not present due to circumstances beyond his control. Staff present is Mr. Craig Pennington, our planner, Mr. Leon Hughes, our director of planning. Oh, there he is, Mr. Chris McKenzie, our county attorney. And Mr. David Sadler and Mr. John, his last name just went out of my head.
Voight.
Voight.
Voight, John Voight, IT people. I'm getting old, forgive me. It's fried by this point. Our first order of business will be approval of the minutes from August twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty three. Commissioners, have you had a chance to review the minutes and are they correct or do they need any additions or corrections?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the meetings for August two thousand and twenty three be accepted as they're so written.
Motion by Mr. Young, seconded by Mr. Weaver. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Minutes are adopted for that date.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to approve September twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty three. Be approved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Minor, seconded by Mr. Young to approve the minutes from September twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty three as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries.
I'd like to move that we accept the minutes for November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty three.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Horton, seconded by Mr. Young for approval of the planning commission meeting minutes for November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty three be approved as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. All right.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask, maybe I overlooked it, but what happened to the October minutes?
That was our joint meeting with the board of supervisors, and those minutes are still in preparation, so they will be forthcoming.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Next on the agenda would be subdivisions and...
Mr. Schwartz, before you move on to item number three, I believe you wanted to amend your agenda to add the electronic policy to any and all matters?
Ah, yes. Commissioners, we are going to amend...
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes, sir.
And also to consider a date for a community meeting?
Yes, I have both those listed. Thank you. We have two items to add to the agenda this evening. Item one would be establishing a protocol for Zoom attendance by any commission member who is unable to attend for specific reasons. And...
Yeah, I mean, so my understanding on that was, I will provide you with the documents. I can give you more of a briefing if you want, but that you didn't want to vote on it tonight, that you want to... So if you want to hear more discussion on it, add it to the agenda, or I'll give you the document and...
Well, I would like to see the document.
Yeah, then you can take it with you and it'll be on your next agenda.
All right, my mistake. Thank you, sir. You provide that for us. But we need to establish a public hearing for the comp plan amendment. And we also need to set a community type meeting on the comp plan amendment wherein we will have input from the applicant, and we will also have questions and answers by the citizenry. So those are two items we need to discuss at the end, towards the end of the regular meeting. And with, if there's no objection from the commissioners, we will add those two items. Either item five, any and all matters. Authorization to advertise for a public hearing and the Carmel Church Station north, if I am reading that correctly.
That is correct. Five C.
The community meeting is for consideration of expansion of the growth area.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Right. Okay, you already have on your agenda, under any and all, advertisement for the automated vehicle wash and advertisement for Carmel Chase North.
Yes.
You would add a third item, whether or not to put out notice of a community meeting on what you discussed in your work session. That's the motion to amend the agenda.
I make a motion that we amend the agenda for five C to include a town hall meeting with the community to review the comprehensive plan.
That would be the correct format.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Young, seconded by Mr. Minor. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by majority, or by unanimous, I'm sorry. So the agenda is hereby amended. Now, if we can go to subdivision. Mr. Pennington?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. The subdivision case tonight is SB eleven, two thousand and twenty three, Pendleton, section fourteen and fifteen preliminary plat. The applicants requesting preliminary plat approval for the next two sections of the Pendleton subdivision, the plat creates one hundred and eighteen new lots. Preliminary plat is consistent with Caroline County zoning and subdivision ordinances and is a byright subdivision. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat at this time. Sections fourteen and fifteen are on the west side of your screen where the cursor is.
Commissioners, any questions? Remember, this is a preliminary plat approval. I would like to point out one thing. In a previous conversation with Mr. Pennington, I inquired about any proffered amenities and where they stood as far as completion. Mr. Pennington indicates to me that all of the proffers and the amenities are up to date. There are certain amenities that will be opening, I think, this summer. You can elaborate on that if you would.
Yes, the pool and clubhouse is under construction. I believe that they should I believe that they should be finished by the summer and be open. They've also constructed the pavilion and playground for the children there. And they're in discussions with utilities on their proffered trigger for the water tower. And so they are, they're on pace on all their proffer triggers.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
So we're only reviewing this preliminary?
Yes, the preliminary plat for fourteen and fifteen. Should you approve the preliminary plat, then they can submit final plat and move forward with the rest of the subdivision that's been previously approved.
Thank you.
Commissioners, is there a...
I still have, still have questions. Sorry, sir. Still have additional questions. Sorry, sorry, still have additional questions. These orange lines that are on this paper, Craig, they are the expansion of the roadway systems. Is that correct?
No. So the orange, are you speaking to the one that I have on the screen?
This one, sir. It looks like extension to Road A of Edmonton, Calhoun.
Yes, so those lines are the expansion of roadway, of the roadway networks in the neighborhood.
Sorry to drag it out, but I...
That's okay, Mr. Weaver.
Yeah, so maybe I didn't quite understand, but what this look like is proposing is you're adding additional lanes in front of section sixteen?
I'll let the engineer speak to the layout there.
You have a part, sir?
Fortunately, I didn't have it pulled up on my surface.
That's okay. They're talking about meeting this.
I'm Keith Oster, principal at SDI, engineer for the project. Those red lines, what those depict is the potential future widening of that road to serve possible uses west. We're not really doing anything other than just making sure that we have a potential expandability for the future, should we have a desire or the county, or should there be the desire to have it? It's nothing more than just, just having it be a possibility in the future for good plan.
So this has not been approved by the county nor VDOT, correct?
The...
So the preliminary plat does not get approved by the county or VDOT. The preliminary plat is brought to you. We review it for consistency with the zoning ordinance and the previous proffers that were associated with the approval of the neighborhood. Should the preliminary plat get approved, then the final plat will go to VDOT for approval, utilities for approval for all the utility lines, and the planning department for ultimate approval.
Craig, will this come back in a final form?
No, the final plat is not required to come back to the planning commission.
Thank you. Well, I guess if it doesn't come back to us, then we just have to approve the preliminary plat.
Yes, as long as the preliminary plat meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance, which this plat does, then you have to approve it.
Thank you, sir.
Any further questions from the commissioners? Chair will entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion that we approved the plat as submitted to us, the very plat as submitted to us at this date.
Second. Motion by Mr. Weaver, seconded by Mr. Minor. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by unanimous decision. Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Your first item in our unfinished business today is SPX zero eight, two thousand and twenty three, Berry Fund Daycare. The applicant's requesting approval of a special exception permit to allow a childcare facility in pursuant to Article nine, section three, nine of the Caroline County zoning ordinance. The only update that we have for you is that the applicant has talked to the McDonald's fast food restaurant next door and is able to lease parking spaces from them if necessary, should the ten to twelve spaces in front of the daycare not be enough. The rest of the staff report remains unchanged.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, any questions of staff?
Do we have this verbal agreement between this applicant and McDonald's? Do we have something in writing?
We do not have something in writing.
Yeah, that was going to be my question. What happens if the owner of McDonald's sells and that property and the new owner decides that's not agreeable to them? What happens in that situation?
I would think that they would, if the approval happened, that the applicant at McDonald's would sign a document in that fashion. But I'll let the applicant speak too, if that's how it would go.
Good evening. I have an email from her. I can get that signed off if needed. However, the daycare is only going to have thirty to thirty-two children. Therefore, my staff is minimal. So I should have plenty of parking for my staff out front. So I should never even need that in the back. But I took the precaution of looking into it just in case I ever did need it. I can't never get any more children, so I can't get any more staff because I'm limited on the space I have at that location.
Ma'am, you currently operating now?
Not right now, no, I'm not.
Okay, so you would be applying for a license to operate?
I do, yeah. I did have an in-home license for years until I had to sell my house through a divorce. But yeah, I have to unfortunately start here, then it has to go to the next meeting, then I have to file with state, which is another thirty to sixty days. This all takes time.
Ms. Claire, as I understand in your previous submittal, your employees will be going to the vehicles on arrival and taking the children in, did I understand correctly?
Yes, sir. I have, my opener will be doing that.
That would alleviate the parent or whomever
Right.
from having to exit their vehicle and handle...
Yeah, we're going to make a round driveway, so they'll just pull up and around. And my opener will go in and get them out of the cars and bring them in. Yeah.
I know one of our concerns was the safety of the children, and that was paramount. But I noticed something over the holiday season. I started paying more attention to especially mothers when they would take their children out of a vehicle to enter a store. And it dawned on me, number one, they're doing the handhold.
Yeah.
But not only do they have to watch traffic coming from front, but they have to be aware of traffic coming from behind, cross traffic, plus vehicles backing out of parking spaces. And in nineteen sixty-six, the federal government mandated car seats or safety belts in all automobiles. My wife was the inventor of the original safety seat for children.
Wow.
And that was as driving, it was his. Okay?
I think I got that when I was a kid, too.
Thing of it is, our daughter, when her kids were coming up, she did the same thing. So parents generally are very well aware of their kids when they get in and out of vehicles, so, you know. I like the idea of your employees coming out
Yeah.
to limit the amount of exposure that the kids...
Well, the elementary schools do it, too.
Yes.
So...
Okay. And that was the only issue that I wanted to bring up.
And I love that idea as well. That makes me feel a little better, a lot better. You indicated a round driveway, so you're going to do modifications to the subject's property?
So we, I measured it all out, and it will work just as it is right there. We're just going to put cones out and draw some lines out there. So I shouldn't have to modify it at all.
Okay. My biggest concerns, as I stated before, is the truck traffic. Overnight truck parking, the day parked truck parking. I've visited that site on many occasions. I'm concerned with the neighbor business behind it. You indicated that you would put fenced back area in, and that fence can't be locked. I have a concern with abduction. We have quite a bit of that in the areas, not necessarily, well, yes, quite a bit of child abductions. I'm real concerned about those going into that particular environment or in that particular space. That's my only hesitation. I applaud you. I want you to be in business. I want you to be in my district. Okay, yes, I'm being selfish, commissioners. However, I'm just concerned about that particular location.
Right.
Okay? If I had children, honestly, well, I do have children, but they're grown. Okay, if I had children, honestly, well, I do have children, but they're grown, I, I, you know, with all due respect, I probably wouldn't go there, because I would be concerned about my children being there, if you can make me feel a little more comfortable, you got me, okay?
Well, it's gonna be a six-foot fence, there won't be more than ten children outside at one time, and there will be two supervisors outside with those children, um, I think we could do, I know that they do have locks, here's the thing, it can't be locked on the inside because it's a fire hazard, however, that being said, I know they make door locks that are push lock, so it's locked from the outside, so I'm sure that that can be put on a wooden door, why couldn't it be, right? So I'm sure that could be fixed somehow, that we could put that on that gate, so it would be a push lock, so it's locked from the outside, people can't get in, but you can push it to unlock it, and that is approved by, um, the state, because it's just has to be fire safety, and that's what's gonna be on the inside, too, because the doors are gonna be locked from the outside, because obviously, this is not a safe world we live in, so it would be the same, the same thing, I would just have to figure how to mount it, probably just take a contractor to do it, that simple.
Yeah, if you're gonna put a safety fence up there, if you're gonna have a contractor to put the safety fence, which I would recommend that you do.
Yeah.
Then I would, they would, they would have the qualifications to be able to put that type of lock on it, and you just satisfied my, my concern by doing that.
Absolutely.
If you would, if we could incorporate that into the plan.
Yeah, that would make me feel at ease, too, and everybody else, I'm sure.
Um, I don't know if Mr. Hughes or Mr. Pennington can answer this question about uh, the six-foot gate that's gonna be in the back of the property, would that impede the view of traffic by any means other than the trucks, you know, would car traffic going on that back roadway?
Uh, no, I don't believe so, um, if you look at the approach from the west side, uh, there is no turning movements on the west side of that property for the fence, it's a straight through, so if you were coming from the McDonald's to the east, there is no, no traffic to come across the parking lot that way to impede your flow, if you're coming from the west, from the Exxon towards the McDonald's, uh, even though the fence would encompass the backyard, you have about a twelve-foot median there, uh, if you see at the end of the McDonald's parking lot, uh, closest to the fence, and so as you approach the fence, you would have, uh, enough view there to see someone approaching the McDonald's drive-through or circling the McDonald's parking lot.
Thank you, sir.
I, I, I realize it seems, seems like an odd place to these guys to put a daycare, but that's where most daycares are located, they're located in the center of a busy area, and it's just because that's where the parents work, I, I do agree, we need safety features, you know, as was discussed, but this is usually where we see most daycares, I think the idea of the, uh, gate blocking from the outside, cause that's what you do at schools.
Right.
Can't get in, but you can get out.
One other thing, ma'am, while you're there, um, we talked about the traffic coming from the east, so with the traffic plan coming from the east, they would have to turn on, um, the road by the Taco Bell to go around the Ruth and Glenn Road, then come either across others' property, or make a right between the hotel, the motel and, um, the Exxon station and drive in through the back, so now they are coming against the grain of traffic, how would you extract those children from the car, they're coming against the grain of traffic?
Well, they could come up on through, they could actually, well, we could do it one or two ways, and I haven't put much thought into that, but we could also do a pickup, no, I wouldn't wanna do that, that would stop traffic, yeah, I would recommend them just go on through the McDonald's, cause McDonald's has a separate exit out of it, and then you could cross in front and come on into my building area, or you could go down to, there's a crossover right there, you go down to the light, there's a light down there, and then you could cross over and do a U-turn and come back around, to, like, if you were going to the Exxon, that's what a lot of people do, they'll go down to the light and then cross over and come back around, and then they're in the right way of coming on into my building area.
Okay.
Instead of going all the way back around by the Taco Bell.
Understand, okay, but however, um, if you're coming from the east on two oh seven.
Right.
You can't make a left nor a U-turn.
Oh, you can't?
No, ma'am.
Oh, I did not know that.
Okay, it's one way, you have to go all the way down to Flying J and make a U-turn there and come back up.
That would probably be the best way for them to do it.
Yeah.
Instead of going all the way back around.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, that's your only course of action.
Yeah, because that just seems like putting a lot of extra traffic.
Mm-hmm.
Through.
Someone else's property.
And I don't wanna do that.
Correct.
Yeah, so that's what I would tell them to do, yeah, that way they're not interfering with other people, cause that's the last thing I wanna do, is make other people mad.
Have you considered any other vacant buildings, any?
For five years.
Okay.
And there is no areas in the whole Caroline County area, that a lot of it's on septic or well, and they won't hold for a daycare, I've tried.
Um, what about Belmont, have you had a chance to look over there next to the, um, urgent care?
I did, and, um, I went to look at that one, and when it was coming up for lease, I went to look at it because it had had a school in it, and I didn't wanna go through all this because it's very costly, and they said I'd still have to file for a special use permit, so I stepped back from it, and then I said, well, let's go ahead and do it, and it had already been leased out, so I don't know if it's up for lease now or not.
It's vacant.
Yeah, I've had this building leased, the problem is, is you have to lease the building before you could get here, and I've had this building leased since July, and it's a five-year contract that I'm in now.
Okay.
And this is the hard part about Caroline County, because there's steps you have to take, and this is very difficult to find somebody to work with you.
The, the, the traffic, the traffic in front of your daycare center, if it's located here, it's gonna be one-way unloading.
Yeah, it will come in off that road.
That's where most daycares operate, yeah.
Yeah, mhm.
I just wanna clarify something real quick, so her parking lot would be one-way, where you come in and circle around, drop off your child, and then leave back through, but the interparcels connector in front of the daycare has to allow two-way traffic between the McDonald's and the Exxon.
Yeah, I don't think that.
Right, so her, her parking lot would be one-way circulation to, for safety, um, but should somebody wanna go between the Exxon and McDonald's, that travelway in the front is a two-way lane.
So they come into your parking lot one-way and then come out, okay.
I'm not sure where would you come out, I mean, it looks as though you would come into the parking lot area and then you would have to back, back out?
No, uh-uh, there's plenty of room to do a turnaround.
Sure.
That picture is very small as to what it is.
Come in here.
Yeah, you can wait and then go out.
Yeah, just loop around here, so you eliminate the parking spaces if you're gonna do a loop around here?
Correct.
Is it okay to come in?
Yeah, that's just the entrance, this is where you would come in from the west side of Carolina, and you would come in here, and then you would.
Here, you could go up here.
Correct, mhm, this has to be two-way traffic at all times, this way would impede traffic, anybody coming from the east?
I think it'd be okay for the, with the kids, or the other traffic, there's no way we can control the other traffic.
Correct.
If I may just offer, uh, I have sat at this location and watched traffic, there is very little traffic that uses that interconnect going from McDonald's to the gas station, in a two-hour period, there were three vehicles, now, that, that wasn't at the peak time, that, cause I, I'm not gonna get up at six o'clock in the morning and go and sit and park, but there is very little traffic using that interconnect. One thing I'd like to point out is that the parking lot for the daycare is elevated above McDonald's, and it is curved, there are concrete curbs around all sides of the proposed daycare center, so that would be something that I, I think, uh, if a vehicle were to go astray, the curbing would help deflect, but I, and I think with the elevation that it has, because you can't tell it from the aerial view, but when you stand at ground level, you can definitely see, I wanna say about a three and a half to four-foot elevation, I, I didn't measure it, but just looking at it, uh, that's what you get. And I understand, and I share the safety concerns, um, but there's something else that I'll, I'll share, once the Ms. Claire has, has, has finished, that may give you a, a, a different perspective, or a different look. Any other commissioners have anything that they would like to ask? Thank you, Ms. Claire, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Commissioners, I, I think one or two of us had a specific concern about the truck stops and some of the historical aspects of truck stops pertaining to, uh, drugs and narcotics, and what has been labeled as the world's oldest profession. Uh, I contacted the sheriff's office and asked for a crime analysis of each of the three truck stops, they went back three years, and I've got the numbers and, and the records and all, but what I do have is a letter, uh, from the crime analysis unit, that as far as law enforcement initiated or reported or indicated activities involving those two criminal acts, there are none on record, so that's not saying that it doesn't happen, cause I've sat in McDonald's parking lots and watched drug deals go down, so they're everywhere.
Good point.
But, uh, yeah, at, at least the sheriff's office, uh, has no self-initiated or reported activities of those natures for the past three years at the truck stops, uh, I didn't do them for, ask them for the Dunkin' Donuts or the Exxon station or Taco Bell or any of the other locations, because it's address-specific, so, but for those three locations, for what it's worth, nothing on record.
Thank you.
And with that, uh, commissioners, do you have anything further?
Um, no, I think there is a necessity for this type of operation, um, I, like everybody else, am not too delighted with the exact location because of the traffic, okay, and, but I still think there is a necessity for the working families of Caroline County to be able to bring their children to a safe location, and as a father, grandfather, and great-grandfather, I don't think any of my children would bring their children to a location that they felt was unsafe for those, for those children, so I know that my daughter and my granddaughter would take their children to a facility that was safe, so therefore, like I say, I don't, I don't like the traffic situation, but I'm not against this application.
I think you're right, Mr. Weaver, um, I think there's an inherent danger with any childcare facility or any business, uh, something could happen to a child at a McDonald's, uh, any public place, uh, but the fencing is going to be solid fencing, it, it's not something that a, uh, pervert, I'll say it, pervert could be standing there lurking, uh, at the children, uh, and, and I would like to see the lady have a chance, uh, I think it's something that she can make work, uh, and, and I would be supportive of it. Mr. Young?
Uh, commissioners, um, yeah, um, your name is not Ms. Berry, what is her name?
What?
Claire, Ms. Claire, okay, based upon what you brought before us tonight, one, you mentioned a wood, I think in the last meeting we said we would like to see a vinyl fence instead of wood fencing, okay, so that, let's make a clarification on that, if we would, if you would have, make sure that we could have a vinyl fence with a push bar lock on it, um, and I would make a recommendation, I don't know if we as a board should do that, or we pass it off to the board of supervisors to consider some type of, or may have to go back to, uh, Mr. Pennington them, to consider something for citizens coming from the east, a traffic flow.
Right, um, first, uh, so, according to the vinyl fencing and the push lock and things like that, when you make your motion, if that's something that you would like to see on the case, then you can make that a condition, um, uh, you can add conditions, uh, remove conditions, however you feel necessary. And so the traffic from the east, are you, do you mean the traffic that would be dropping kids off or the interparcel connection between?
Correct.
So if you wanted to condition the way, uh, traffic would get there, you can make that a condition as well, um, so you can condition that, uh, no one will enter the property from Ruth, uh, Ruth and Glenn Road behind the Exxon, uh, that all traffic must enter from Route two oh seven, you can make that a condition as well.
Thank you.
I would have a question on such a condition, maybe it's a legal question, uh, if that were conditioned, and the parents decided that that ain't the way I'm going in, uh, would Ms. Claire be held liable, would she be in jeopardy?
And who enforces it?
Yeah, that, I mean, yes, it would be, I mean, that's, and that's a, Mr. Schwartz, a, a good observation, that, you know, the conditions are only as good as their enforceability, um, and so, yes, theoretically, if there was a, a routine problem with that, it could jeopardize the special exception permit, if, if you violate the conditions of your special exception permit, it can be, uh, withdrawn by the board, um, so what we try to do is draft them in such a way that they are observable, enforceable, and something that's generally within the applicant's control, um, so that, that is up to you, um, but it's a good observation. So I, just for, for thought, if you're at that, if, if there's more discussion, by all means have it, but I, I put together some language based on what I was hearing from you, Mr. Young, and the questions from the board that I can prepare, that I can read to you to see if it fits the kind of conditions you wanted to add, um, because what you would do is make a recommendation and amend the, you know, with the conditions from staff as amended tonight, um, and so what I have is, uh, the first one, you were talking about pickup and drop-off, um, that seemed important about being monitored by staff, and these are, you said, Chris, I like that one, let's use that, or nope, we don't need that, don't need that, so these don't come with any recommendation for and against from me, I just tried to write something based on what I was hearing, um, so pickup and drop-off shall be conducted by staff who shall escort children between their vehicles and the entrance to the daycare center during these times, that sounded like something that you were focused on, um, and then the second one with fencing. And then the second one with fencing, uh, fencing of the playground area shall meet the following requirements to the greatest extent permitted by applicable laws, ordinances, regulations. Put that in there so, because DSS and the county have their own requirements about fencing. And I want to make clear that we're going to meet or exceed those, or, or we're going to meet those, um, requirements. But in the end of a conflict, those other DSS or county ordinances would prevail. So fencing the playground shall, shall meet the following requirements to the greatest extent permitted by applicable laws, ordinances, regulations. A solid safety fence at least six feet high. So I think I heard that number, but that's not it in there. Constructed with vinyl or plastic PVC materials, Mr. Young just said. And then with a one-way gate latch protecting against access from the outside. And then the third condition would be whether you want to do any condition about how the parcel's accessed, um, by vehicular traffic beyond what's already there.
My recommendation would be, um, that we do not, um, utilize a Ruth and Glenn Road, um, um, entrance. I would, I hate to say this, but I would have to, you know, I recommend that they go all the way down to the Flying J to make the U-turn to come back and have traffic flow all in one direction.
So it's a, whether you want to add a condition that states, um, the property shall only be accessed via Rogers Clark Boulevard, is that right?
Rogers Boulevard, yes.
Is, is, is that enforceable?
So you could condition that. It is very tough for us to enforce that. It would take, uh, you know, someone seeing it happen, uh, reporting it to us, and then us seeing it happen again. And again, like Mr. McKenzie said, uh, should people utilizing Ms. Claire's daycare not follow her rule to not enter that way? And they begin to enter that way, uh, she could lose the special exception. So it's, it's very tough to enforce that. And it could, if, if she has a parent that won't follow her rule to go down to the Flying J, then it could cost her the, the application.
Well, I would like, at least like to see it put in place. But I think she could have a little control over the parent as well. If the parent continues to disobey the rules, then she would have to dismiss that parent as a client. But that would be her decision.
Or, or we can make the suggestion that she suggests that to her parents. Because I think it's going to be really hard to enforce.
Enforcing is a nightmare.
So, yeah, the other, and, and the applicant, yes, please.
I can actually put that in my contract because I have a signed contract with the parents. So when I go over my contract with the parents, I could put that in my contract and let them know that I will lose my permit for that building. Therefore, they will lose childcare. So I can make that, you know, by telling them that I can make a very important statement about it.
I'd be more comfortable with that.
So. And then if I find out that they're doing it, of course, I would dismiss them immediately. And I'll have that right in writing that they will be dismissed immediately.
Thank you, Ms. Claire.
Mr. Young?
Yes, sir.
Uh, because of the enforceability, staff would prefer that that not be a condition.
Okay.
Um, and so it'd be better served for the county if she put that in her contract and it not be a condition of the special exception.
Okay.
Okay, so that just leaves us with the, the two I read about. Pick up and drop off and the construction of the fence. That is your proposed amended conditions.
So, Mr. Chairman, um, I make a motion, uh, to approve, um, SPX oh eight two oh two three with the conditions stated.
As amended.
As amended. Well, that's.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Young, seconded by Dr. Horton for approval of SPEX oh eight twenty twenty-three with these special conditions as amended. Any discussion? Sir?
I would like to discuss this matter, please.
No, sir, this is not a public, uh, comment, Tom. There is no public comment on this. Sir, you're out of order.
Yes, I could send an email a month.
Thank you.
The citizen comment letter that was received by the planning staff is in your packet.
Yes, sir. Commissioners, motion has been made properly seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by unanimous decision. This matter will be forwarded to the board of supervisors with the recommendation of approval with the amended conditions as attached. Good luck, Ms. Claire.
Yes.
All right, next item, item five, any and all matters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. First item under any and all matters tonight is regarding text amendment TXT zero one twenty twenty-four, which is to create a definition for automated car wash. This would be a car wash that would utilize a tunnel wash or any automated systems. Uh, this car wash would not be, would not classify any of the, uh, self-spray car washes. So this would be create the definition of automated staff-run tunnel car washes. The second text amendment is TXT zero two twenty twenty-four. And this would be, this would add the use of automated car wash to the planned shopping center zoning district in Article, uh, sorry, um, I don't have the article with me, sorry, Article eleven. Uh, it would, the planned shopping center district, to allow automated car washes and provide standards for unautomated car wash. Uh, we are asking that you authorize public hearing for these two text amendments for the February Planning Commission meeting.
All right, commissioners, we've been asked to authorize public hearing. Is there a motion on this matter for these two items?
I would make a motion that we advertise for public hearing for TXT oh one twenty twenty-four.
Do we need a singular vote for each?
Yes.
Uh, we, we would need authorization for TXT zero one. And then we would need authorization for TXT zero two.
That's what I thought, thank you.
I second a motion.
All right, motion by Mr. Weaver, seconded by Mr. Young to authorize a public hearing for text amendment zero one twenty twenty-four. Any discussion, members? There being no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries unanimously to authorize a public hearing. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we, um, open for a public hearing, uh, TXT oh two two oh two four.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Young, seconded by Mr. Minor to authorize a public hearing for text amendment zero two twenty twenty-four. Any discussion? Being no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it unanimously. This matter will be forwarded to the board of supervisors. Sorry, it will be set for a public hearing by the planning department. RZ zero three twenty twenty-three, Carmel Church Station North. Owner, ADP Carmel Church Data Hub, advocate. Mr. Hughes?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So in your packet, you received information related to the, uh, request to rezoning at the Carmel Church Station North. And we just wanted to provide you this information because we are targeting a February twenty-second Planning Commission hearing. And we wanted you to have this information in advance so you could, uh, look through it and ask questions. There's a significant amount of information related to the case as it is tied, you know, to the Carmel Church Station project. And so didn't want to give it to you at the last minute and you have to have to read a bunch of information. So if you have any questions as you go through the information, please feel free to reach out. There is a, uh, the applicant prepared a proper comparison chart so you can kind of work through and look through and see what, how the proffers are being amended. Um, and so please don't hesitate to ask any questions if you, you know, see anything in the information that's unclear or you'd like clarification on. The, the gist of the request is to, uh, essentially amend the proffers of the Carmel Church Station to allow the data centers to go in essentially as a part of phase one.
I've tried going through this, Mr. Hughes. I would rather read Tolstoy's War and Peace in reverse. But no, uh, I must say, Ms. Neal's company has provided a, a very good comparable chart. And I do appreciate that. It makes it much easier seeing them side by side. So thank you for that.
Yes.
And if any time, if you guys would like to come by and work through anything, if you have questions on anything, please feel free to let me know and sit down and, and work through it.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
Thank you, sir.
Great job.
Uh, let's see, last item under any and all matters would be notice of, uh, a community-style meeting, uh, regarding the Carmel Church, uh, growth plan. Uh, comp plan amendment. And I'll turn that over to Mr. Hughes where I think we're all in agreement. We would like to have some additional information definitely from the applicant. And we would also like to, I guess, offer a Q and A time for the citizenry, so that we can get a better understanding as to how this commission will proceed with it.
Sure. And so you, tonight you just need to decide on a date?
I'm sorry, sir.
So tonight you need to choose a date for that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And so a couple of options that I had looked at are February eighth, February fifteenth, or February twentieth.
What, what, can you tell me the days of the week?
Thursdays.
I can, yeah.
Thursdays, Thursdays.
I think it's two.
Fourth, fourth is a Monday, fifth is a Monday, right?
He said the eighth, fifteenth.
So it's a Wednesday?
Eight, no, eight is, eight.
What day is?
And the fifteenth on Thursday.
It's a Thursday.
Okay.
The eighth is a Tuesday.
So right now we have the fifteenth booked because that would normally be a BZA night. And so I can confirm for sure that this room is available. The other two days I'll have to confirm, check on availability of the room. But the fifteenth we do have available.
I think, yeah, fifteenth is right before our meeting, so right, uh, the week before. I would be inclined to consider the fifteenth.
Especially since we know that the meeting room, you know, or the auditorium is available. Uh, grab it while you can.
Okay, so.
Mr. Weaver, do you have, uh, any conflict with that?
We're doing, taking gentleman's.
We're looking at the fifteenth of February.
At, uh,
I think I follow the fifteenth.
You think you're doing what?
I said, I think I'm fine with the fifteenth.
Okay, very good. Mr. Minor?
It's okay.
Okay. And it's okay by me. Dr. Horton?
And at the time, it's six thirty or?
Whatever time we decide.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we set a meeting for town hall discussion, on February fifteenth at six thirty PM here and the same location.
Motion by Mr. Young, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Weaver for February the fifteenth at six thirty PM in this very auditorium. Any further discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it unanimously. Sir, we will have a community-style meeting at this location, February the fifteenth at six thirty PM. The chair, if there being no further business, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn until our next meeting on February the twenty-second, twenty twenty-four at six thirty PM.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Mr. Young, seconded by Mr. Minor. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it unanimously. Motion carries, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.